Good evening, and.
Good evening, and I'm gonna go ahead and call the February 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order. If you please join me, stand and join me, and I'd like to ask the Honorable Colonel Ryan Jones to lead us in the flag.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
The next item is roll call. Councilmember Lopez Taff.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Present.
And Mayor Daniels.
Here. Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Today's meeting replays Monday, February 26th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
All right, next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Schaefer. Any questions or comments about the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No? Pass. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment. If members of the audience wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, acting clerk. And Mayor, I do have one comment for consent calendar item number seven.
Okay.
Which I'll read during this portion, and then two written comments for item number eight, which we will hold until that time.
Okay, let me read a statement real quick and then we'll take that consent comment. We welcome members of the public to address the city council concerning any item on the agenda or within the council's subject matter jurisdiction. We ask each speaker to limit their comments to five minutes each. As the mayor, I have the discretion to reduce the allotted time. We have a countdown display of the allotted time, and it will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Also, consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda. And then you're gonna read the comment now for the consent item?
Yes. This written public comment was submitted by Rick Hodgkins for item number seven. I have a comment and then a question. My comment is, I don't know if Citrus Heights actually supports or does not support inclusionary housing. If the award for funding is received, will it allow us to be in support of inclusionary housing? I know that besides Hidden Oaks, Sunrise Point, the Oaks at Stock Ranch, that which is for seniors, and Arborell, that which is where I reside, I do not know if any other affordable housing units, as things changed ever since I made Citrus Heights my home 23 years ago. Thank you. And that concludes the public comment.
All right, next item, please.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay, start with Councilmember Middleton.
Very brief updates, thank you, Mayor. One, I survived the 13-year-old. I'm still here. And I also made it to the chamber luncheon where we learned about, you know, keeping your business safe from people who want to steal your money. And that was really interesting because a lot of that stuff I would've never thought of, and I really want to encourage folks to come out to the chamber luncheons because there's a lot of interesting topics that, you know, can really help you in your business. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lopez Taff.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just a few items. I did attend the half-day workshop for neighborhood engagement community workshop and met with my neighborhood area leadership, and that was really a great time to think of different ideas, think about how we can use our gifts and interests to benefit our community. That was really a nice time to just talk casually about those ideas. I also attended the Rotary Crab Feed on the 10th, and I am very, very happy to announce openly in this forum that we now have a new executive director hired for the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. Sherry Merrick will be beginning Monday, March 4th. So excited to welcome her.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. So, wasn't terribly busy this last couple of weeks. So, right after the council meeting on the 8th, I went into the, on the 9th, to the ceremony opening, fill the boot. I did not hear how successful that particular weekend was. I hope it was quite successful. It was great to meet the firefighters over there. Councilwoman Portia Middleton was there with me. It was, and so was Ash Feeney, our city manager. Really a great event. So, and then, let's see, I had, I was indicted to the Folsom Rotary Club to talk about their tax measure that they're proposing. They wanted to hear some feedback on how it might compare or not compare to Measure M. And then, just last night, I attended the Sunrise Park and Rec District to discuss the Kathy Cook Amphitheater project there seems to be moving a little. Let's just put it this way, I just would hope that we would come to kind of some kind of resolution on that issue, at least next month. So, and then I neglected to say, I had a great, wonderful experience, and we're gonna be reviewing that as well. We had Dr. Jana Karpinski Costa and I sit on the Finance Committee. We had a Finance Committee meeting on the 16th. It was great. It was really a wonderful report. Thank you very much for all of your hard work there. So, I look forward to moving forward and approving this. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Okay, it's PSA time, you know, to update you on mosquitoes. But, you know, besides doing mosquitoes, we do ticks. We flag ticks. You kind of lay a little sheet over the tick areas, and so, and the ticks glom onto them, and then we test the ticks for the organism that carries Lyme disease. So, in the wintertime, ticks are big from November to May, and that's when the mosquitoes start becoming our main focus. So, we started our tick flagging, and we have 20 sites that we do on a regular basis. And over the last two months, we found 18 of the 20 sites had ticks. And of those 18 sites, there were 293 ticks. They divvy them up into five ticks in a pool, and then they test the pool. So, we ended up with 75 pools. Five of those pools were positive. So, the ones that are mainly around that we know about is like Mississippi Bar. A lot of people like to go down there with their dogs. Not good. You know, the thing you do with your dog is you check, you know, for ticks. Check your dog for ticks, and then, you know, pull it out with tweezers. The tick has to be on the dog for about a day before it really infects the dog. So, if you get it out pretty quickly, the day it gets it, you're better off. Also, remind, heartworm, the mosquito lives in tree holes. You can't drain a tree hole. So, the best thing to do is to have your dog on heartworm prevention. See your veterinarian. And that was mosquito meeting. Sewer meeting. So, a couple of things updated on there. At the last meeting, we approved a contract to build a biogeneration facility, which will generate enough heat and electricity to operate about our, in 2026, it'll be done. And we get our, what did I say, 60% of our power and heat, I think, offset. The cost of the facility is $144 million. In the end, we have savings, which will be passed on to you, the consumer. So, they hope to start in October, finish by end of 2026. The American Society of Civil Engineers has selected our Echo Project as one of 11 finalists for Outstanding Civil Engineering Achievement Award. This is like the Oscars in civil engineering. So, it's an honor. It's a black tie event in Florida. I wasn't fast enough to say I'd go, so somebody else is going. But I thought, gee, the vice chair ought to go, but. Anyways, past winners have been the John F. Kennedy Airport, Gateway Arch, the California State Water Project, and the World Trade Center. So, it's an honor to be one of the 11 finalists in their awards night, which is good. I went to the park board with our mayor and Tim, and I want to thank Thomas Spencer for videotaping it because Bill Cook has been ill, and so we were hoping that Bill would be able to catch the meeting with Thomas taping it. But I don't know that Bill's gonna hear anything, because we couldn't hear anything sitting in the room. It's like their microphones are just desk ornaments, and so, other than the chair, we couldn't hear much of the conversation. The project, if I had something nice to say about what happened last night, I would, but I'll just leave it there. The pit count, somebody asked about our point in time. I gotta read this. This is something that I thought this was. So, I was looking for the pit count. You know, we did the point in time homeless count. So, I went on the website, and it said, oh, the pit count's done. And so, I clicked on it, and it was like, the number is from two years ago. So, I emailed her, and I says, where would I find a link to the results of the pit count? And here's my answer. This is so typical. Thank you for reaching out regarding the pit count results for Citrus Heights. The data from the recent unsheltered pit count in Citrus Heights, along with sheltered homelessness figures, is currently being aggregated and analyzed. A comprehensive report, including these findings, will be released in a few months. You can't just put it in the computer. Uh-uh. You gotta have somebody taking the money that's designated for homeless efforts and pay people to sit there for a few months. This is the standard process for pit counts, as mandated by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Once finalized, the report will be made available to the public, including our website. Thank you for your patience and understanding. I was on that homeless board years ago, and nothing ever gets done because everything stops up here. You know, it doesn't get down to the people and the streets. So, when people complain about homelessness, there's more tiers to the problem than just the bottom pair. And what else? Oh, I part, we all participated in the Neighborhood Engagement Workshop. Is there gonna be an update from staff on that? Okay, so I won't bother with that. It was incredible. We all were there, and it was definitely a wonderful thing that Natalie Price brought back from her NUSA trip, and these people were just terrific. Did go to the Rotary Crab Feed. Want to thank the city for sponsoring our table. And I think that is it for me.
Thank you very much. Okay, yep, attended the chamber lunch with some of the council members. A very, like Portia mentioned, very interesting time, getting educated on fraud and business and stuff like that. And if you think that your bookkeeper is the person that would never, ever do anything, that's the person who's doing it. So, you know, just protect your business. Just get a second set of eyes on things, or a third set of eyes on things, and then you won't be surprised, hopefully. Went to the Rotary Crab Feed with everybody in the world, and just gonna say that those people know how to throw a party, and really good time and whatnot. Didn't win any raffles, so my daughter's very upset at me, but maybe next time. Went to the park board meeting, and hopefully, there is some sort of path towards getting the amphitheater issue moved or moving. And then, just a reminder that Mondays, I do Mondays with the mayor from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. here at City Council. If you want to come by and have a cup of coffee and tell us how wonderful we're doing, or how horrible we're doing, please stop by and chat. And then, final thing is, I went to the airborne meeting this morning, and a nice short meeting. Only thing out of it that I would bring up is that there was approval for $3 million for charging stations, and it's part of a $15 million pot, and if I remember right, it's annual. And all the charging stations, though, that were approved are in the city of Sacramento. It's the kind of thing that happens all the time on these boards, it seems like. But I just want to bring that up, and Ash, maybe we can look into that, because the process has now began again for this pot of gold. And it can go to nonprofits, it can go to entities, or whatever, and it allows a charging station to be put in in areas where they're needed. And that's it. Let's go ahead and go to the next item.
The next item is consent calendar, items four, five, six, and seven.
Anybody wish to pull anything from the consent calendar?
Yes, six.
Number six. Any other items to be pulled from the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion on all items.
Move approval.
Okay, it's been moved to by Councilmember Schaefer for items four, five, and seven. Any second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any questions or comments about those items? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item number six. Do you want a?
I just want to comment. I want to make a comment.
And could you read the item? Go ahead and read the item, please.
Item number six, the subject is Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and the recommendation is to receive and file the City of Citrus Heights Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023. The City of Citrus Heights Popular Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023. The Audit Communication Letter and the Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and on Compliance and Other Matters.
The name is longer than I was gonna have my comment. As Councilmember Schaefer said, we had a Finance Committee meeting, and we were given this preview of what is in this item. And I just want to compliment, you know, you talk about the bookkeeper. Here's our bookkeepers over there, and Alberto and Susan are just incredible at doing this job. I mean, I'm not a numbers person, but I urge the public to either download it from the website, the city's website, under agendas, and it would be item six, or hopefully, the sum available to you is the, this is it. This is the Popular Annual Report. It is so readable, even for a person with, who's challenged by numbers. But it's a wonderful, the pictures of Citrus Heights, easy to read. You can see our budget. You can see where the money comes from, where the money goes, and you can see what happens to that $1 of property tax, how it's divvied up to all the different pots it goes to. There's lots of information. It's readable. It's skinny. It's nice. And I just want to thank staff because it's just impressive. I just, I was almost in tears when I took it home. I went, oh, this is so cool. So, anyway, that's nice.
All right.
And that's all I wanted to say.
All right. Anything else on item number?
He wants to comment.
Six.
He wants to comment.
So, I'm a numbers guy. I love to do. It's great. She may not be a numbers person. I'm a numbers guy. It's readable. It's fantastic. Even the long version really isn't that difficult to understand.
And anybody, anything else? Nope?
Thank you.
Councilmembers? If I may?
If I may, Councilmember?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Schaefer. We distributed your copies to you. We have copies for the rest of the council as well that we'll provide to the city clerk to provide to you. I do want to also say, we have copies of this lovely report that our staff put together. I don't want to take all the credit, but definitely will spread that to the entire Finance Division. It is also available on our website, as is the 150, I believe, three-page longer version, which is the ACVER. So, those are available.
You don't need the long version. The short version is my style.
I carry this around with me, like, I love it.
It's definitely to be read with a glass of wine in one hand, so.
Perfect for the pool.
Yeah. Okay, motion on that?
I'll move it.
Okay.
I second.
It's been moved by Councilmember, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa, and seconded by Councilmember Schaefer. Any questions or comments about the item? Okay, all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next item, please.
The next item is public hearing, item number eight. The subject is Addition and Amendments to Adopted Master Fee Schedule, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution amending the city user fees and establishing new fees for certain services provided.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Susan Talor here, Administrative Services Director. Tonight, we are presenting to you the Master Fee Schedule Updates and Amendments. This is an item that we would bring back typically annually around this time of year, so that we'd like to proceed.
Thank you. As Director Talor mentioned, we bring this item about annually to you with some suggested, recommended amendments, occasionally additions, and sometimes subtractions. The first couple of items are the finance fees, the returned check fee. Staff is recommending that this be amended to be called a return payment fee. As council can imagine, there's a lot more electronic payments being received by the city versus just checks. So, renaming this fee to a return payment fee would more accurately reflect what the city is responding to when we have returned payments. The next item is the altered animals charges. So, on the October 12th council meeting, council received a public comment requesting that staff take a look at adding dogs to the lifetime registration for altered and microchipped animals. So, staff has completed an analysis, and the processing time is comparable to that of altered and microchipped cats. So, it does justify adding dogs to this fee. The next items are new for the Master Fee Schedule. Staff is recommending the adoption of a late fee and a rescheduling fee for our annual rental housing stock. These are cost recovery fees, so they would cover the costs, the administrative costs of staff having to work with folks who are late on their registrations or payments, and also on rescheduling an inspection visit. The final item is a deposit for state housing incentive projects. The state legislature has passed quite a few newer laws in the last few years that have to do with incentivizing new housing. So, when a project is submitted to the city for review, staff is unable to determine, you know, based on the size of a project, the time necessary to analyze these projects could vary. Therefore, instead of a flat fee, staff is recommending a deposit, which staff would draw from when they are working on this project. At the conclusion of a project, either additional monies to cover the additional costs, if it exceeds the deposit would be requested, or if a refund is due, then that would be provided. Any questions?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, just a clarifying question. If you can tell me what, if you can, okay, we're here. What is a housing stock fee?
So, the housing stock fee is basically for rental units, for us to be able to, when homes are being rented out, it is a fee that they're paying per unit. And that is basically an inspection fee for us to be able to maintain the homes in the area, make sure that they are up to standard and code, or sometimes you can see that tenants or owners, property owners, maybe neglect the property. And it's basically to keep the city and the homes in it clean, so to speak. So, we do not have a late fee or rescheduling fee for when we perform these inspections, and this is standard to the existing late and rescheduling fees that we do have.
So, looking at your master schedule, it has a rental housing inspection fee, so that's different and separate?
That's correct.
Can you just explain the difference? Because I want to make sure that my, if I can't understand it, I don't know that our regular public would understand it.
Sure. So, the rental housing stock fee and the inspection fee, I think it's chief, you can probably explain it a little better, because I know code typically goes out and inspects these homes. Thank you.
Evening. Alex Turkot, Chief of Police. The rental housing inspection fee is a fee we already have on the books, so the stock fee actually pays for that program, and so that's the fee that folks are already paying for, if they own rental property within the city. That's the fee that allows code enforcement to come out and do inspections. This fee is just in addition to that fee if they miss an inspection, if they're late, or if they have to reschedule an inspection. Those are the two fees that would apply to redoing it, if you missed the first one.
I see.
So, it's part of the inspection program?
Got it. Thank you.
With just the homes, it's apartments too, right? Apartments and homes?
Any rental property, yeah.
And that's per unit, right?
Yes.
That's per unit.
Right, so there's a different calculation for the apartments and how many get inspected and such, but it's prorated depending on that. But it's not only single family, but apartments and all the complexes, too.
So, the process to, when you say late fee, there's not an automated process that's in place just to send them a notice that says, we haven't received your fee, and you need to pay it?
We do not at this time, especially given our current ERP system, but that is something that we could possibly automate in our new ERP system.
And then the same thing with a rescheduling fee, there's no way for them to go online and just click a button and reschedule their inspection or whatever?
Not at this time.
Do you know if the landlords are taking these fees and dumping it back on the tenant, making them pay for it in the end, or is, you know what I'm saying? Is this like a penalizing the occupant, the tenant?
It shouldn't be. In practice, what we've found is, although nobody likes a fee in general, we've actually had pretty good feedback from both landlords and tenants. Somewhere, we have tenants who maybe the landlord isn't performing. That gives them a way to have to have an inspection without making a complaint, because it's part of the annual process. So, we've had some pretty good success stories there. On the other side, for landlords that may have an issue, it helps them say, hey, I passed an inspection. It's clean and safe, and it helps them with their business as well. So, whether they're passing it along or not would probably be a personal choice for the landlord.
You haven't had complaints like, you know, hey, my landlord's charging me for the fee that you charged him?
I don't know that they would itemize it out like that. It might be part of their overall calculus for what the rent costs, but nothing specifics come to us on that.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Mayor, and I'll just add too, on these fees, like the late fee and the rescheduling fee, this is fees to recover costs that staff has taken away to deal with processing notices for folks that are late or having to reschedule appointments, and it takes them time away from doing other activities. In this way, we're able to recover that, so.
And I understand that I'm just kind of amazed that it's not automated. I mean, you know, if I don't pay my credit card, you know, there's not a little old lady in a basement somewhere going like, you know, you know, they're just gonna attach a fee on it and charge me an extra fee because I'm late. So, I don't know if we're moving in that direction, hopefully, or something, but it sure seemed to me that that should be automated.
With this new ERP system that our finance and administrative services team is spending so much time in, immersed in right now, that the council approved to do things like that for the future, we are hopeful that there'll be tools like that, and we're confident that there will, that we'll be able to deploy that in the future. But we don't want those capabilities right now, and if we find that that system is so automated, if you will, and easy to administer, then of course, we can revisit this any given year as well.
Okay, and then, I'd like to see us drop that fee on the senior citizen discount rate. I'd like to see it be zero, but I don't know if the other council members feel inclined to support maybe a reduction in that. Lot of senior citizens on fixed incomes, the cost of living's just killing them already. And, you know, if they're trying to decide between food and licensing their dog, they're not gonna license their dog. So, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but I think we ought to.
Well, I'm 62 years and older and senior, and so I would support that, disclosing that I would benefit from it.
Well, I'm not a senior citizen, nor do I own a dog, but I would support that as well.
So, when you say support, are we talking about no fee?
I'm not saying no fee. I'm saying maybe like a $25 fee, something to kind of.
Something to get them in the books, get them in this computer, so we know that they have.
What's the lowest we can go? I feel like we're unlikely. Let's make a deal.
I'll offer 20. How's that? 20?
No, you want it to be odd, so you're gonna be like 23.
Right.
Why would I want it to be odd?
Because all the numbers are.
And it's between 25, what I suggested, so.
Okay, $21.
Okay. Can we do that?
I defer to our city attorney to make.
Can we do that?
This all feeds into revenue that we cover cost of service administration. So, these fees are being recommended to recover cost. So, basically, the animal control program does have a cost to administer that program. These fees. does have a cost to administer that program. These fees feed into that. So if we're taking revenue away from the program, then are we going to revisit how we do services?
We have to mail our fees to Texas. So we don't even have staff to process our
Well, look, let me just say this in regards to that last comment. I respect that totally. But also, I'm fully aware of the fact that we're sitting on millions of dollars. Not that we're not looking to spend millions of dollars on other things. But again, I'm going to go back to the fact that we're talking about senior citizens who are on fixed incomes, a lot of them, if not most of them. And the cost of living is outrageous right now. And they're making decisions on whether to eat or do other things. And licensing your dog is not going to be up there with something they're going to want to do if they don't have those funds.
The only thing I would add for consideration on that is, as a new fee, this is lifetimes. They don't have to incur a cost annually like they currently do. So that's just another factor of trying to save some money in the long run.
Can I offer, can we, I'd like to know what the cost associated with reducing this $57 to $21. I'd like to know what the real number is and cost. But I think that what I would suggest is we pass this for now and come back and revisit that's the possibility of doing the senior discount rate at a future date when we have all the information, when you make a decision.
I think the normal rate, if you didn't have a lifetime, the senior rate for an altered dog or cat for one year is, what, $10? So basically, they're registering for five and a half years?
So that's correct. It's $11 for a one-year, $22 for a two-year, and $29 for a three-year.
So it's 29 for three years. So making that 21 isn't good. You'd have to be at least a little more than the three-year cost, right?
Well, you don't have to. You said have to. You don't have to at all. Again, I really feel like we're talking about a pot of gold that is not that big to the city's success, but could be a difference to somebody else. And I'm still firm on, I'd like to see us drop it. To me, 21 is reasonable.
And in the end, it is discretion or the will of the council, how you want to come. You just can't go in excess of a cost to the city, but we're not at that point.
Yeah. I mean, it is, as the city attorney said, it's ultimately the pleasure of the council. But just I want to, full disclosure, this is how we pay for services.
Right. And then I want to ask about the housing incentive project thing. How's that, the $5,000, how does that compare to what we typically see maybe in fees that somebody may incur? And are we talking about, it says state housing incentive program. Are we talking about new housing? Are we talking about remodeling? What level of housing are we talking about? ADUs?
Casey Kemp, our community development director. So as the council has seen several times, we've talked about the plethora of laws the states passed that mandate certain housing products, housing and commercial zones, for example. And they each have their own unique set of application criteria and processes. We haven't had any of those yet, but we want to be prepared in case we do, want to be able to recoup our costs for that. So we do have some existing planning fees that are $5,000 deposit and is a time and materials basis. And so that's what we're recommending right now because it'd be consistent across the board for our planning fees that we do time and materials. Other jurisdictions can do a flat fee, but in order to charge a flat fee, you'd have to do a fee study. It gets a little bit more complicated. And just since we don't have a track record of doing this, we recommend the time and materials basis.
So for clarification, this is just like a retainer?
Correct.
Essentially, this is a fund that gets drawn on that when staff invests a certain amount of time, that gets drawn, this 5,000 gets drawn down. If staff finishes their work and they're still, they've only accumulated $2,300, $2,700 goes back to the applicant.
That's correct.
So I think I have a pretty good handle on this. And it seems, when we start talking about the, you know, the cost of doing an ADU or cost of doing a project, this is pretty.
This is just when if housing comes in, like.
Just if it's one of those state.
Into a commercial zone.
Yeah, just if it's one of the state laws, we have our own fees for, for example, for an apartment that's not using one of these, would be a designer review permit. And we have our own set fee because we have a good handle on what that costs. This is a little bit unique. It's got a different process. So we wanted to make sure that.
They don't have to pay a zoning change, right?
No, yeah, the state would, there's no zone change for that, yeah.
And just to clarify, would it go towards remodeling homes and stuff like?
No, it's only for the state-sponsored, generally multifamily apartment projects that have an affordable component.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? It is a public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this, please come forward. Any comment cards?
I do not have any speaker sheets, Mayor, but I do have two written comments that I will read.
Go ahead.
The first is from Stephanie Walsh. And she states, please make it clear that there is a waiver process available if family is renting to family. This would have been helpful for me to know prior to a couple of years of me paying this fee and going through inspection. The inspection was clearly a valuable waste of time and resource. That concludes that And another comment was submitted by Rick Hodgkins. He states, I realize this is for the licensing and licensure of pets, but service animals are not considered pets under the ADA American with Disabilities Act. Now, once a service animal, particularly a dog, retires, that's a completely different story. So will this apply to service animals, guide dogs, or signal dogs? Thank you.
Okay. Any others? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing. Okay. Any other questions, comments, staff, motions?
What are we going to do with the, just do what Tim says and just pass it and then worry about it another time?
Depends on who makes the motion, I guess.
Yes, I move that we accept a resolution, the City Council of City of Citrus Heights, California amending the city user fees and establishing new fees for certain services provided. That's.
I'll second that with the caveat that let's look into some senior discount on that number, just get a better number, if that's doable. Okay.
That's a motion with a caveat?
There's a motion with the caveat.
It's a motion in a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Schaefer and seconded by Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa. Any questions or comments about the motion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa?
Yes.
And Mayor Daniels?
Aye. Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number nine. Subject is fiscal year 2023-2024 mid-year budget adjustment and financial forecast update. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget.
Okay. Good evening again. Susan Tellar here, Administrative Services Director. A couple of discussion topics that we're going to run through tonight. We have our fiscal year 2324 mid-year budget review. So this is a point in time as of January 31st, 2024. So from July 1st to January 31st, we will be reviewing our general fund, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and then going through the 10-year financial forecast update. So a little bit about our budget calendar. The budget was adopted on May 23rd, 2023. And we are here today on a mid-year review, again, as of January 31st. We're going to be bringing forward some updated revenue and expenditure projections. So looking at the chart in front of you, the table, we have our revenue and expenditure projections here. So looking through, you can see we have our 2023 to 2024 budget and then our year-to-date actuals. Our revenues are about, were budgeted to be about $43 million. And our actuals to date are about $11 million, putting us at about 25% of budget. And then we have our expenditures at about 30, about 40 million. And about, actuals are about 21.4 million. So about 54% of budget. And you can see, and it is typical for us to fall in a shortfall this time of year. So going through that, we'll have Finance Manager Alberto Presiado go through that.
Thank you. Yes, as Director Tellar mentioned, our revenues are, they come in a set cycle. Our property tax and motor vehicle and Lufu both arrive in January and May typically. This year, we actually received those right at the beginning of February. So they just missed that mark to be included on our January 31st totals. Sales tax also has a little bit of a lag, I know the county, right? Sales tax is about two months behind. So we have through January 31st received our allocation as of November 2023. Again, as Director Tellar mentioned, our expenditures are on track with our projections. And as the general fund does typically have a deficit balance this type, this time of year, we do rely on our cash reserves to fund the general fund while the revenue catches up.
So some fund adjustments for our revenue adjustments that we're requesting tonight, we're requesting about a $700,000 adjustment. This is mostly attributable to property tax. So we're asking for about $50,000 increase. And that's based upon projections from our consultant on our property tax and what we're anticipating and receiving. Sales tax is going down by about $500,000 and mostly due to a combination of decreased gas prices and economic factors influencing buying decisions and business closures. Our motor vehicle and Lufu fees are going up about by 70,000. And investment revenue, interest rates are up. So we're seeing a benefit from that. And we're anticipating an additional 1.1 million in interest revenue. For expenditures, we're asking for an additional 128,000. And going down the list within our police department for our post-training, we're asking for an additional $12,000 there. And these are typically reimbursed, but at the rate that we are currently receiving the reimbursement, it might exceed this fiscal year's budget. But we do anticipate receiving those reimbursements. The recruit academy, we budgeted for about four recruits to go through the academy. And we had about two additional recruits that are going through plus increased tuition fees. Our booking fees are up as well. So we're, I mean, that's good. We're out there doing our bookings and we're seeing significant charges. Also in towing, we have an increase of towing and storage of evidence vehicles. Software, we have about 7,000 there. And that's just normal increase in software costs. Reimbursable expenses, so these are expenditures offset by revenue accounts. We have, like, as an example, vehicle stipends that are reimbursed by task force, the sexual assault exam that is reimbursed by the state. So they will be reimbursed, but we're just upping the expense on that. So there's no fiscal impact on that as well. For canines, we have about 13,000. And the expenditures were inclusive of costs for unforeseen issues with one of the canines. In the Administrative Services Department, we have an education reimbursement increase request. So the budget has currently been exhausted, which is a good thing. And we would like to continue to assist staff in their professional development. So looking through and ahead at our year-end projections here, you can see with our total year-end projection, we're projecting about a surplus of almost close to 4 million. And basically over or under budget, I should say to speak, with a net impact of 630,000.
Just to summarize our current position with the American Recovery, American Rescue Plan Act, excuse me, we were awarded nearly $15.7 million by the federal government. As of the current meeting, the council has appropriated 14 million of that 15 million
Excuse me, moving forward to our financial forecast. So the purpose of the financial forecast is for us to be able to look out 10 years in advance and ensure that we are fiscally responsible and are planning ahead as we look out, trying to identify any potential issues. And then if there are any issues, what kind of plan that we can take to correct any issues that are out there. So what has changed? We have updated it with the revenue projections that we presented to you here tonight and the expenditure projections as well. And you can see here in this column, it's a little bit shorter version of, just to kind of get it fit on the screens. It's not the full 10 years. That's in the staff report. But we are projecting an N D reserve balance of about 25.1 million. And you can, we did include our street repairs and also our Auburn Phase 2 match is also included in there. So with that, we have a recommended action of adopting a resolution tonight of the City of Citrus Heights, California approving amendments to the fiscal year 2324 budget, please.
Okay. Questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Lopez Taft.
I have a question about process. I understand budgets. I don't understand budgets this large. But if you can tell me the reason why we have to ask for a budget adjustment, considering it looks like from all the material that you presented, we're on track.
So agencies, many agencies do handle it differently. It is a best practice to be able to come to council and ask for these budget adjustments because you are, council is the one who approves and adopts the budget of what we have allocated. If we are going to go over, it's best practice for us to come forward and say, this is what our projections look like. And we need to make some amendments here so that we still are in line overall and keep transparency.
Okay. Because in my mind, if we have an overage and a change, it would inform our next year's budget, rather than continuing to shift and move so that some of that, I mean, we're a public entity, so it won't get lost, per se. But it is not as obvious at the end of the budget year where adjustments were made if we don't keep a running total of how adjustments up and down are done. So I was just curious about that process and how that figures into just how we see the budget year to year. I'm not familiar with adjusting budgets on a personal level or where I work. So this is just an interesting process for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Schaefer?
Thank you. So in light of the fact that I attended the Folsom Rotary Club discussion about their tax measure, they have pretty big concerns about the decline in sales tax. Everything I've seen from our sales tax doesn't look like it's in huge decline. Can you give me some sense of the, what the trend for sales tax looks like right now?
So when we did speak to our consultants, who are experts in the area, and most of the state does contract with them, there is some decline. You notice we have about a half a million dollar decline that we're projecting here. And they do give us projections for the next five years. And that has also been incorporated in the financial forecast so that we do see a little bit of a shift in there. It's not huge. I mean, it's 500,000. I'd have to, give me a moment. I do have the paperwork and I can pull that up. So it's, there is a little nominal increase that they show mainly due to inflation, but not so big. It's like 2% year over year. So they did the decline and then it's 2%. Hovers around 2%.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that note, I find that very confusing because people are still spending money and things are costing a whole lot more. And when things cost more, you're taxed based on the cost. And so that would mean there'd be more tax being collected. I know my wife's still spending money. So I don't understand why there's this thought that people are going to stop spending money or going to spend less or things are going to cost less. So I don't understand the dip in, the idea that there's going to be this dip in what's coming in on sales tax.
So they, the dip that they've provided is for this fiscal year. And then it's basically like an adjustment. So they, the dip that they've provided is for this fiscal year, and then it's basically like an adjustment. There's a slight dip because of the gas prices. They've come down, so the tax is lower, right? And then we have some business closures or some small economic factors that brought that down by about a half a million. And then projecting out, they have considered about 2.3, 2.6% inflation on top of it, so it's kind of a level of both.
Okay, okay, okay.
Incidentally, on the news, they were just talking about the gas prices are expected to be over $5 a gallon by Memorial Day.
Or money. Anything?
I just want to comment on commending staff. I mean, if you look at the bottom line and what's in our reserve, and how we've kept that mainly steady since we got our great city manager. And it's, you know, it's staff pulling together to make the budget work and to make the city, you know, in the, in the red, black? It's a color. And it's everybody working together, because I'm sure that most of the departments, you know, you kind of want this, and you want that, and you want, can we afford it? And so, you know, we kind of grit our teeth on our roads, and we, you know, sacrifice some things so that we can have great police department, and we do. And so, but it's the staff working together, and I want to just thank all the staff for making that budget look so good.
Yeah, be careful. It says evaluation time. You don't want to
He's doing a good job.
He's doing a great job. Anything else?
One more. Can we scroll back to where we were talking about how much we're doing, investing in street repairs?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so when you look at this, this year it's 2 million. We have 4 million sort of infinitum for the rest of the 10 years. I did some, you know, some research and some math and built an abbreviation table to figure out if we had
The numbers guy.
Regina, is Regina still here? So I think the number for road repairs is about $90 million. If we had, if we had it all and we could put it all into roads right now, it would be about 90 million.
That's correct.
So in this case, if we invested $4 million a year towards that 90 million, it would take us 39 million, 39 years to pave all the roads, where the road lifetime is somewhere between 20 and 25 years. So we got a gap from a road standpoint, so I just wanted to point this out, that we are making the effort here to, this is more than we, the city has ever contributed from the general fund to road repairs. This is a huge, huge deal. And I appreciate this, Ash, that you, you've dedicated this. But it's, as much as I love to see it, we're going to fall short. So, so we have to look at options. So that's the end of my comment.
On the property tax thing, you said the county was late getting our property taxes to us, or that it just came in?
No, that's, it typically comes in in February, so we received it in February 2nd. And just this past Friday, so February 16th is when we actually received their spreadsheet with the breakdown, so it just takes time to turn it around. Now we've got to reconcile it on our end.
Thank you very much then. Okay, and then, great report. I mean, this is wonderful to see. The three things that stand out to me is, if I understood you correct, that for the 2023-2024 year, we're looking at about a $4 million surplus, that we still have 1.5 million left over from ARPA funds that we need to spend, and that overall, we've got about a $25 million reserve. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Sounds good to me. Any other questions or comments? Okay, and I think we need a motion on this?
I will move, adopt Resolution 2024, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California approving amendments to the fiscal year 23, 2023-24 budget.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer and seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taft. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with glee. Next item, please.
The next item is item number 10. The subject is second reading ordinance amending contract between the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System and the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights. And the recommendation is to adopt an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System.
So, good evening. Susan Towar here, Administrative Services Director. This is an item that we brought to you last month and is pending from October or late September, so item is in front of you.
That was beautiful.
Move approval. Can I just move approval?
You can.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa, seconded by Councilmember Schaefer. Any questions or comments to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item, please.
The next item is department reports, and there are none.
Next item, please.
The next item is city manager updates.
Well, good evening, Mayor Daniels. Vice Mayor Dr. Karpinski-Costa, members of City Council, Ash Finney, your city manager, here with a few updates for you. First one, the community workshop. This was mentioned in council comments, and really appreciate the full council's attendance at this workshop. Very well attended. It was a full workshop. We, I know we had at least 40 on the list, and there were other attendees that came that morning to make it a full house, and just really impressed with the work that the community put in on that, our council. All of our department heads were there as well, and that ran from 9 to 2. It was a facilitated workshop, and it was really talking about community assets. And, you know, what people love about their neighborhoods, what they love about their communities, what their gifts are within their neighborhood. And then there were some projects that were identified at these various tables about what these groups would like to execute on, and kind of came out of there with a do list, if you will. And very exciting, some terrific energy, and exciting about where that could go. I've been doing a stakeholder roadshow, visiting our neighborhood area groups, talking about our strategic planning, and getting some of the terrific ideas that come out of the residents here in Citrus Heights. I'm really looking forward to sharing those with the City Council at the strategic planning retreat. And just really appreciate also all the neighborhood residents for attending those meetings. I still have several to go. If I haven't been to your neighborhood and you'd like to share some things with me and our team, I'd love to hear from you. So we have that scheduled up on our website for when these next neighborhood area meetings are going to be happening relative to strategic planning, so. But that community workshop definitely helped give some good fodder for those discussions as well. And then this is another thing that our community engagement team led the effort, but everybody was involved in this, all departments. And this is the strategic objective that the City Council had passed, where it's the kind of desk drawer reference for the city. And so it's going to speak to all your services within the city, have information about the services that are provided, contact information, information on reporting methods, but this gets right back to the City Council-approved CARES campaign about reporting, maintaining, chipping in, and it's, if you get this in the mail, or when you get this in the mail, I should say, since it's going out to every household next week, please don't toss it. You're going to want to open this up. You're going to want to take a look at it. You're going to want to put that in your kitchen drawer, hang it from your refrigerator, because there's going to be a ton of good information in there. And really excited to have those hitting mailboxes starting next week. So just wanted to identify that for people to take and keep a lookout. We purposely avoided the holidays, too, so it didn't get buried, so we're hopefully, our timing's perfect for people to really see it and experience it. And that concludes my updates. And I just want to say, too, thank you, council, for your kind comments on the budgetary actions that were before you tonight. It really is a team effort, certainly led by Director Towar and her team. And then, you know, the entire team, as you mentioned, you know, goes into making sure that not only do you build a budget, but you execute on that and continually maintain and pay attention to that budget as well, so. And the council was also a big part of that, as we prepared for that two-year budget and talked about what the community's priorities are. So team effort from the city team and also the council, city management team as well, so thank you.
All right.
I forgot something when I gave my update. I wanted to remind people about the sewer rates going up, and there's a public hearing on that. Mark your calendar for March 7th. It'll be in the South Flex Room. Is that the, is that here or at the community center? It says South Flex Room. It's 6 o'clock to 7:30.
That should be at the community center.
Community Center, okay. And then also, the district attorney is coming on the 4th of March to here, to this building at 6:00 PM. So if, mark your calendar. We've got things to do next week, or the week after.
Okay, next item, please.
The next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm saying about a year, I don't, a year and a half ago or so, council approved $1.2 million for an update, for a, to replace the ERP system. I'd like to see an update on that, how that's going, what's the timeline, what's
What system?
This is our electronic resource planning system, our internal, this is our internal software that we use to run the city. $1.2 million investment. Couldn't tell me how long it was going to last. It'll last forever, right? But nonetheless, I digress. So, okay, so that's that.
If I was poor in finance, it's even worse about this.
We got good people in charge. Okay, so the next item is, I was a little troubled by, nobody heard about this. The City of Walnut Creek had a man show up at their, at their council meeting wearing a SWA sticker on his shirt, and he went on a big white power rant in his, in the public comment. They're moving forward to adopting a rule that if you come and do public comment, I certainly like to hear what the city attorney's perspective is on this. If you're doing public comment, I would suggest that we consider a rule that says, same thing Walnut Creek is doing. If you're going to make public comment, it has to be related to city business, and not just any random person wants to come up and have an audience get on TV and promote their white power malarkey. So I certainly like another
Well, that is included in our disclaimer, or whatever you want to call it, that it has to be under our subject matter jurisdiction.
That is correct. I mean, the Brown Act says it's got to be, I would say that a lot of times mayors and councils give some discretion if you could bring it back to something related to the city. But if somebody was to do something here and start speaking completely off-topic, we would turn the mic off and ask them to leave or
And we always have our police chief or somebody there, escort.
Okay. That's all I had.
Anything over here? Okay, anything? I just, do we have any young people in the audience that are 18 years or younger from a school here? Please stand up. And could I have you step up to the podium here for a minute? We just have a little special recognition that we like to do for you. Come on up. Don't be afraid. We don't bite much. If you could, please tell us your name and where you're from and why you're here.
My name is Jason Andreov.
Where are you from?
Center High School.
And why you're here?
We do like community service for around like our neighborhood and for school.
Thank you very much. Next up.
Hi, my name is Fatima.
And where are you from?
Center High School.
And why are you here?
For community hours.
Thank you. Next up.
My name's Dorina.
And why are you here?
I'm from Center. I'm here for community service hours to graduate, basically.
Thank you. Thank you for staying the whole meeting. You've made it to the end, and you've done better than most that come. So thank you for coming in, and please come back anytime. I'm sure this was
And you're absolutely welcome here, always.
Thank you very much. Oh, you want to, now she wants to really talk. So, no, no, go ahead. No, go to the microphone.
Could we take a selfie with you guys, because we need a picture that we were here?
Absolutely. We're about to end the meeting in just one minute, and we'll be happy to do that. Go ahead and stay right there. Anybody, anything else?
Want some picture?
Yes. Nothing else? We're adjourned. Thank you.